To myself, later.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Council Conference of Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. There's one item on the agenda, so we ought to be able to keep up. It's a continued discussion regarding the emergency shelter. Mr. Piergen.
All right, so recap where we left things off. So we had, at the last meeting last week, we discussed the food and shelter objections to the proposed contract. They had four that they identified. As a reminder, that was the requirement for a third-party security contractor objection to the internal auditor conducting the audits, objection to the city's right to recoup funds if a future audit finds improper expenditures, and then an objection to dedicated bank account that they would have to maintain for the project. The feedback that staff received from council at that time is that the first three were the most important, and we weren't necessarily as concerned with that fourth one about the dedicated bank account. So based on, you know, that feedback, staff, you know, did a revised draft of the contract, putting back in those terms to the new contract that we were wanting to enter into with food and shelter. We wanted to require that third-party security contractor retain the right to recoup funds, audit by the internal auditor, but we did put in there specifically that, you know, food and shelter, and we would be agree, I think we'd be agreeable to food and shelter requesting a third-party auditor if they're the ones who paid for that expense. And again, we left out the requirement for the separate bank account. We did get a response. I will say that food and shelter did not have enough time between the time we submitted that contract and today to meet with their full board. They couldn't get a quorum. I think they had some people out of town. The board president did respond, and he did mention that he made contact with each individual board member and had one-on-one conversations, and he indicated that they would not be able to have a majority to support the contract with those terms, right? And he also mentioned, again, that the board wished to continue under the existing contract they've been operating under since 2022. So what that means is that, you know, I think at this point, they are only willing to operate under the agreement we are currently under, which is flat fee, you know, the one we entered into at the very beginning on 2022, and the one that was subject to the audit. So I think we also, you know, followed up with them. A council member sent in some, something that was sent by a constituent that may be, you know, middle ground, so we sent that to them. We did hear back, and again, they reiterated that they wish to continue under the existing contract and not want to negotiate a new agreement that's like reimbursement-based. So I think that's where we're at. I also kind of, I think based on that, we're bringing an item that would terminate the current contract because council at the last meeting stated that, I think, without those terms in the new contract, they would not be willing to enter into a new agreement. And we kind of took that to say that we're not also willing to continue under the current agreement. So tonight, there's a resolution that would give staff the direction to terminate the contract pursuant to its terms. And so I kind of want to go over what that would look like moving forward and just remind us what kind of, where we're at under the current contract, what that would mean, and kind of where we were trying to get with the proposed contract. So, and this is a budget comparison between the budget we had initially received in 2022 with the budget that would have been attached to and required to food and shelter to follow, and the proposed contract that would have been a reimbursement contract. So if you notice, the total staffing cost goes down under the new contract, actually. However, the staff hours in the budget will go up. So we would pay less total for more hours. And I think that is, again, because, you know, the original budget had two security positions, 12 hours a night, $45 an hour, right? And then if we look at the new contract, the budget that food and shelter submitted, they have, you know, one security officer for $30 an hour for a night. If you take out that security position which we requested, you're left with like the total staffing cost to be around $35,000, which I think is maybe where they're about operating now in terms of their staffing level. I'm assuming, since we requested them add the security position specifically, it may have replaced a shelter monitor position, but I'm not sure. So the annual operating expensive did go up because I think that's just, you know, the reality is that once you're in the contract, you understand that there's a little bit more expenses than you maybe initially thought, but it didn't go up a huge amount. And the new contract would have also had a 5% admin fee, which is about 2,000 and some change a month, but overall, the monthly budget would have stayed the same. Technically, if you take out the admin fee, which wasn't in the original contract, it would have been less than what we're paying now. But with that admin fee, it would have gone up about, you know, $2,000 or $1,500 more a month. So I think that, you know, again, I don't know if the total staffing where they're at right now, I don't know what that would look like, but if it's what they've indicated in the proposed budget, it's probably substantially less than what we're currently paying under this flat fee arrangement. So I wanted to bring that to council's attention, just so they understand like what we would be continuing to agree to. And I also wanted to provide like a little line item. This is directly from the budget submitted. If you notice, the 2022 budget, you know, part-time, you know, coordinator, intake workers, fire watch, cleaning crew, and then again, I think the budget of what the 2022, or the majority of the 2022 budget was from those two security contractors, right? $45 an hour at 12 hours a night. Once they, you know, reduce those positions and I think change that into what is, I think, an overnight shelter, shelter monitor, that really decreased the amount that they were currently spending. If you notice, there's a lot of, there's, the hourly amount for the workers at the shelter have gone up, and I think that's also because of they were able to cut costs through the security contractors no longer being employed. So I think, you know, this is what we would have entered into had they agreed in the proposed 24 budget, we would have had, you know, I also think, keep in mind, I think right now the shelter supervisor, if we were looking at the audit, payroll information, probably averaged around 30 hours a night. If we had gone to 40, it would have increased costs a little bit. But again, I think we would still be paying less total staffing costs under that new contract than what was current, what was originally budgeted for, which again, I think is, goes back to those security positions. All right, so again, there are technically two items that will be before council, I think. The first one's on the consent docket, which is just, that one's appropriation of funding, and that's going to be from the beginning of fiscal year, this fiscal year to November 8th, which is the minimum amount of time that council could, you know, cancel the contract. So this would secure, at the very least, if council wanted to terminate with the least possible notice, that would get us to cover our contract expenses. So if council wants to extend the notice period a little bit, we would have to reappropriate if we wanted to continue until March 31st, and we would not want to terminate, then again, we would have to reappropriate more money in order to cover that. So just putting that out there, that that would, again, require an additional action, but it would be a simple resolution. Now, the larger one that's off consent, that's going to be the resolution directing staff to terminate the contract. So a yes vote for that resolution, it would provide, you know, staff direction to give notice to food and shelter pursuant to the contract terms, a minimum 30 days' notice. So we were recommending, and this is what we will do unless we get negative feedback here, we were recommending 60 days instead of the 30. And that's because, you know, we still are trying to get another contractor to take over operations. We have not been able to, you know, confirm that they would be willing or able. So I think 30 days will not cut it if they're able to do it, right? We would have to close down the shelter. 60 days, if they're able, right, hopefully gives us enough time to where we can continue operation without having to shut down for a short period. That being said, because they haven't said, you know, that they would be willing or able, and we're optimistic, but that being said, I think it might be better for council to go into this, assuming that a yes vote would close down the shelter, because it is not guaranteed that we will get a new operator, okay? So I don't want to promise anything we can't deliver, so just wanting to put that out there. And then again, no vote. If you guys do not wish to terminate the agreement, then we would just continue as we have been, and then we would have to bring another, I guess, termination resolution closer to the end of that period around probably the first, or the second meeting in February to terminate on March 31st.
I was going to say, I'm supportive of the 60 days. With that, also, if we operated ourselves, because we've done it at the former library of Comanche, would 60 days be enough if we were facing down, like, oh, we might need to cover it for a month or two?
I will direct that to...
It would depend on our ability to acquire staffing to make that happen. I think for short-term, part-time, temporary assistance, that is possible, and of course, the will of the council is, that's the direction we go.
If we were to hire on employees, we could tell them pending, you know, another operator, you could transition to this employment.
And could be part of your agreement with a new operator to take on the staff.
Okay.
Would we need to hire them, or are we talking about contract?
I don't know if it's, if it's more paperwork or less paperwork, if they're, it probably makes more sense if they were part-time temporary employees as opposed to individual contracts. And then it would be, it would be more expensive for them to operate as independent contractors. They'd have to pay both sides of social security, and we'd wind up paying much more per hour that way.
So you should maintain like a steady employment for folks with the option to transition under a different operator? Okay.
So next, sorry. Are we contractually obligated to appropriate the funds for this month?
Well, the last amendment to the contract is a month.
Right.
So over and above the time that you have to get with regard to termination, no. For example, if you terminated the contract today, there's an argument that they would be entitled to 30 days more of pay because the time period for you to terminate is 30 days.
And I'm just curious, because I requested the appropriation to be a non-consent, so we could have that discussion as well.
Right.
But if it's going to, like I said, if it's going to open us up to some kind of contractual...
I mean, usually the measure of damages for breach of contract is the difference between what you got and what you should have gotten.
Right.
And for this particular contract, it's terminable on 30 days' notice. So arguably, if you terminated it today, they should have gotten another 30 days' worth of pay, so that would be the measure of damages.
Okay, that's, so, perfect, thank you.
It just, so in all of our dealings with this issue, this subject, and not necessarily a friend's house, but just the in-house situation in general, it seems like even the best plans get delayed by variables that are out of our control.
That's correct.
Even with the potential facility that we had looked at moving at that seemed like a smoking gun at the time, it kind of has gone on the back burner, and now we're not sure. And I understand the pressure to get that location off of gray street. But with food and shelter having operated to this point, I'm in agreement with the 60 days. I would even say, would it be appropriate to go 90 days since they've offered until March? That way, we can ensure that in that time span, the shelter doesn't close and maybe get us a little bit more, get a little bit more contingency time to work it out with our new operator, and maybe the location comes to fruition in that time, too.
And council could say 90 days, and I'll look at the attorneys to figure out how to word it, 90 days or 30 days after a new contract is executed with a new operator, whichever comes first.
I just, it seems like no matter how well we plan, something always happens to where we're back here having the same discussion. So I feel like if we can plan ahead a little bit this time to not displace anybody, then that's going to be better in the long run.
I would be agreeable to 90 days.
Yes, sir.
I like the addition to it, or 30 days if a new operator comes in. Like, I better write this down.
Should it be an amendment on the floor?
It would be an amendment to the, to the item.
Actually, it wouldn't need an amendment.
Oh, great.
Daryl, you're saying too, that it would be possible, if we couldn't find someone else to operate it, that the city could hire the existing staff if they wanted to, and we would supervise, administer it somehow, but they would basically just continue doing the same job they're doing, but under different supervision, if that's what it came to?
Yes, and then council could determine the level of security inside the facility and those types of protocols.
Okay.
It's January 1st is when this...
That 90 days would be January, essentially.
We can, we can.
And if I don't have to amend it on the floor, what am I going to do?
I think that, you know, the resolution just essentially, excuse me, gives staff the authority to terminate the contract, and what we will try to do is make it, you know, however we effectuate that, we will make sure that council's goals are met. So, and it would be more contained in the actual notice of termination. You guys are kind of just giving staff the authority to terminate the contract on their behalf.
So that would be whatever number comes up, the council comes up, where that gets stipulated in the body of it, not in the resolution?
Yeah, that would be in the contract, the actual notice itself, or the notice that gets sent.
Okay, how do I communicate that from the, from the dais, so that everybody understands out there, if that's the will of council, without stating it outright? Does that not make sense?
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I guess, you know.
Give us our opportunity to look at the language of the resolution to see how that would fit in there, and I'll...
Thank you so much. Yes, sir. Councilmember Ball.
Well, you kind of answered my question as far as the language, but I would very much like to see this language before we go third of the vote. I mean, because I'm not even agreeable to the 90 days. Daryl, have we reached out to Red Rock, Griffin, Norman Behavioral Health, any outside agencies and had them go in, or requested them to be able to go in and have access to the shelters to these 52 individuals whose lives we're talking about right now? And access the situation, provide resources, provide referrals to tell us an outside perspective? Have we had anybody at all go in there and do that?
We have had an operator tour the facility to understand what assets are currently in play, and that would just be for a quote from that operator's perspective, should they advance their ability to operate the shelter in the future. But we have not had other service providers inside the shelter on our request.
Okay, have there been, there's shelter personnel here? Have there been outside, like Red Rock, Griffin, Norman Behavioral Health, state agencies that's gone into the shelter and asked and conducted interviews to see what resources these people need, or is everything we're going on off the basis of a friend's house reports?
Off the base of a friend's house reports.
Okay, and because the report the city put together, our audit, we've discovered numerous safety violations, and we're going to just kick the can on down the road for another 90 days? I know I sent an email out, and that's why one of the appropriations would be put on non-consent, and I'm a little upset that I didn't, since we want to go and change the wording of what's on there.
It can be pulled from the consent calendar, your request.
Right, well, so, but we need outside agencies to go in there and interview these people, I mean, because it is 52 lives, and there is nobody here that wants something bad to happen to these people. We all want to provide care, we all want to get these people to the best outcome as possible. Right now, that's not being achieved. In the last two years, it's not been achieved, and so we're just going to kick it on down the road for 90 days? Now is our one opportunity to get these outside agencies. I've talked to numerous churches. I've talked to three churches today. They are all willing to step up and sponsor individuals who want actual help. Well, we have a mother in a rehab right now with her three children. She was sleeping in her car. She was afraid to take her kids to the shelter. The mayor knows who I'm talking about. He's part of these org, he's on to these meetings, too. There are resources available. Major Vincent, he's going to be talking during the meeting, I'm going to be asking him a lot of questions. There are resources available for all 52 of these people. We don't have to keep spending $54,000 a month. So just keep that all in mind when we reword the language, please.
Yeah, I feel like 90 days gives us a lot of time to talk to all the resources and figure out what we're doing, especially, you know, I agree with what Councilmember Henkel said, like our best laid plans have been derailed on multiple occasions, and if we all care about the people who are staying inside, I think we're going to investigate, and I don't think 90 days is that big of a deal. And that's not what I was hearing from everybody else at the table.
Councilmember Henkel.
Are the resources that you're referring to, Councilmember Ball, are those only available if the shelter is closed?
No, absolutely not. They're available now, but they're not being utilized for numerous reasons.
So was there any reason to say we couldn't utilize them in concurrence with this 90-day timeframe to get a leg up on what's going to be...
Why haven't they been utilized in the last two years? Would be my follow-up question to that.
I just got here, so...
I understand, but your continual problem has been going on for two years, and you're just kicking the can further down the road.
I don't think we are.
If you're requesting nine more days, you absolutely are.
No, I think we have an ending contract in sight, so that's going to happen in 90 days when we get a new operator. But if we're going to talk about resources that are available to these 52 people, then those resources are available to those 52 people whether we extend the contract 90 days or we go through March.
And they've been available for the last two years.
Then let's start using those.
Why aren't they?
Perhaps compromise is staying at 60, and then, and then that sends a sense of immediacy on your part to get things done. It does continue the contract on with whatever deficiencies people want to see or don't. And, but it gives us an end date, that would be December 1st, essentially. I don't know if the contract's on the 1st of the month or whatever, whatever day that is.
30 days from or 60 days?
Okay, that makes it easy. And, and stay at 60, and that would be, that would be the deal that nobody wants, and makes it a good deal. It's a compromise.
Well, I mean, I would love to know what Councilmember Nash and Dixon think.
Well, I mean, originally, this was a 120-day contract when it was started a few years ago, wasn't it? I mean, there's really nothing more permanent than a temporary government solution. You know, here we are a few years later, talking about, I'd be fine with 60. If we want to do 90, can we put language in there that under no certain terms does it go past 90? So that we're not here 83 days from now saying we've, or 90 days from now saying, well, let's do another 90 on an original 120-day contract?
The council wouldn't necessarily need to do anything after notices sent out by staff to effectuate the termination, so I don't think that language would be necessary to terminate.
It would take an affirmative action on council's part to bring it back and add to it, as opposed to an action tonight, and there's the end date, and...
Councilmember Nash, do you want to chime in?
Yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards the 60 days because it puts in a sense of urgency to actually get this done. 90 days is 90 days to come up with an excuse, not to change the cards, do something else, do the same thing, I don't know. But we need to get something done quickly, and I think 90 days gives us too much of a, it feels too far away, and I think it just breeds complacency.
So, I'm just, sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Daryl Pyle, so speaking of our plans that have been derailed, so what is the current status of, you know, the building that we visited and inspected back in July?
The real property has changed hands through a handful of staff members at OMEs. We were in a Zoom call Friday with a lady named Carrie at OMEs who said now the ball is in her court. She has ordered new appraisals to ensure the state gets a fair price. She communicated that they were not interested in taking any of the real property through an entitlement process to try to add value by getting it plotted and zoned. They would be selling property by legal description. She did indicate that they were willing to become an applicant to establish a TIF over all the real property, and everything else was in a process. So we are, we're just waiting to get information as their processes conclude.
So do we have the option of leasing the building, like how we previously?
We don't know if that will be an option made available to us when they complete their OMEs process to liquidate. They do recognize there aren't a whole lot of buyers for a piece of property they can't take ownership of for probably three years while the new hospital was built. So it's a pretty unique situation. I think there's an awful lot of state property they, they're able to dispose of and immediately vacate, but this one, it's going to be hard to sell, take somebody's money, and you get the property three years from now, so...
So leasing it is not an option?
It could be an option. They, they are in process, and they'll be back to us shortly.
So it's an unknown.
It is an unknown.
Let's say on the purchase of Griffin, the city gets the first crack at it, right? If I understand correctly, we were paying 800,000 for leasing?
The soccer field in Sutton Wilderness, there are provisions in our lease which we think our lease will remain intact because they've already sold portions of Griffin land off to Cleveland County, and our lease said our lease would survive the sale of the real property unless all of the property is sold to one. That's already not happened. So we know, at least we've got 12 more years on the soccer field lease, and I don't know how many years left on the Sutton Wilderness lease. So we are, I would say, in the driver's seat, at least on the soccer park in the Sutton Wilderness area.
If we're talking about putting a TIF over it, then we would have the money to buy it, or not?
We might have the money from a TIF in financing assistance, tax increment financing assistance. We would have to issue a debt instrument upfront and then utilize future add-to-lerm tax revenue to make the debt service on the proceeds for the acquisition. That would be south of Robinson.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's options to get a hold of.
There are. That door is far from closed, it's just a matter of getting them to go through it.
I'm still good with 90 days, but are we half and half on how we feel about this?
Same, same.
I'd be okay with 90 days with the caveat that this existing contract can't go for a year. I'd also be okay with 60, knowing that if we can't figure something out, that doesn't mean it's going to close, it means we may have to make a decision to administer it.
So if it helps, the one organization that we have been talking to to try to get them to take over, I think they're going to bring a proposal to their board Thursday. So we should know here, you know, I mean, we should have a better answer, and, you know, this week, whether or not we need to start hiring people, or whether or not we need to, you know, engage with that operator. So, and we haven't had talks with them since we received notice, so Shannon, I don't know if she's moving with that.
Right here.
I didn't know if you wanted to provide some feedback on feasibility of 60 days versus 90.
Yeah, 60, I think 30's next to impossible, but 60 will be tough, but I think we can, we can maybe figure something out in 60 days.
Would 90 provide some breathing? I'm just thinking, it's the, it's going to be December, the holiday season, things will be busy. I can see difficulty around that time. That's just where I'm coming from, not so much kicking the can down the road, but just providing us the runway to get things set up correctly.
Our HR director has advised that we advertise it for two weeks, take about another week for interviewing for a shelter coordinator or shelter manager, however you want to title that person. So it would take about a month to get that person on board, so there's your 30. So it would take about a month to get that person on board, so there's your thirty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with a little longer runway, considering the time of year we're like entering and, yeah, I'm just concerned that we will not have enough time.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with Grant, because, you know, come December, January, and then the weather, we know how our weather can be, so, yeah, I think, I'm okay with sixty, but ninety might be better, just given the weather aspect.
Would you be comfortable with a clause sitting in, in, at the bottom of ninety days that says, this is final, however you want to legally say, this is the final shot?
I mean, it's gonna be final, sixty, ninety, however you wanna, I mean, if, I think, you know, again, I, I don't know if, I mean, council could still, even if they say it's final.
Well, we're about split, it's counting on my fingers, at, at between sixty and ninety. I'm, I'm trying to find something that a majority of us can agree to, yes, sir.
Just gonna say, my three biggest issues, my, well, two biggest issues are, give us your money, you cannot audit us, we're not gonna tell you where, how we spent the money. And if you find out later that it was misappropriated, you can't recoup it. Like, that's some red flags. So I just think the shorter amount of time we're with this organization, the better for the Norman taxpayer.
Councilmember Henkel, did you have a comment?
I was gonna say, if we have a hard commitment to where city staff could take it over at the end of the term, and we are bringing in these agencies to provide upward mobility for the fifty-two residents, residents that are in there in that amount of time, based on our recommendation, I would be okay with sixty, or ninety, thirty. But I, you know, if, if we can get, if we can get that and say, you know, we're gonna get these other agencies in to help with some of this, and it keeps it from closing, then that would be my recommendation.
How would you phrase that, Mr. Puren?
I think we will want to twenty-two, go back in there, and we'll talk about it before, and we'll get you some...
We've got, we've got about thirteen minutes, so we can go. One member down, that really goofs up the world, doesn't it? It just, my thought, my, I, I just, I like to stick with the sixty, just for the immediacy of it. My favorite is, is just if we can get everything going, if there's a sense of immediacy. People have a tendency to add more energy to a solution, because as you say, none of us want those people out there in the middle of the street, and it's stinking winter, it's horrible. And we have to find that solution. But we've also known about this happening for over thirty days. And so, you know, some people may have made, made differences, so. I guess we fly, fight it out on the dais as to what, sixty or ninety? And, and, and do that, and it would seem to me, as long as there was a phrase in there that makes this a guarantee to the, to the downtown business people, to the city, to the taxpayers, et cetera, that this is the, we're not gonna kick it down the road again. I'd hate to be that, be that certain, because we may have to. But in, in, in what we're looking at, it should be something that we make as a decision that sticks. So I guess we've got, yes, sir.
If we set it at ninety days, there, there's nothing we can do about it. It'll be ninety days, correct?
All right, you can retract.
But if we set it at sixty days, it's gonna be easier for council after sixty days to determine we do need another thirty days. Is, is that right? I mean, from, wouldn't that make more sense? I mean, set it at sixty with the option of coming back for another thirty, instead of saying ninety days? And then, I mean, that would be a compromise that I'd be willing to.
I, I think it, it, it'd probably be, be better for all parties involved to just stick with the original one, just because you want to be...
So just cancel the contract today?
Well, and, and whatever you decide today, probably stick with it.
I mean, I don't want, I don't want to forfeit the contract today and not push you out another sixty days, if that's what you're saying.
Well, I, I'm just saying, because keep in mind, you know, you're gonna have employees at that shelter who, they said, when we give them sixty days, right? That means sixty days, I mean, you may have to come up with some different employment, right? And then if we turn around and say, well, you know, we want another thirty days, maybe they don't have the staff at that point. So I, I think it's important to probably set expectations and leave the expectations where they are.
You say sixty, or if we say ninety?
Yeah. Because again, it, it would make it harder for, you know, to reevaluate.
Any thoughts or comments you have to add? Do you want to bring whatever that item is off the consent docket?
No, but I, I think we've all...
Thank you, makes it easy.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, anything else from anybody? Let's take a break for, not be...